All right, so we're gonna call this meeting in for six. The order 642. We're gonna rise for the Pledge of Legions. All right, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Visible.
Indivisible. Free and justice for all.
We've gotta get used to the little bit of lag between back and forth. I think we'll figure it out, so yeah.
Commissioner, or Chairman? I have a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Those who aren't speaking should mute their microphones. I think there's instructions on how to do that by phone, but if not, we can mute you. But then.
That we won't know.
We wouldn't know whether you want to talk again, but if you can mute your phone, do so when you're, unless you're trying to talk.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the roll call.
Go ahead.
Okay, roll call, Chairman Parker.
Here.
Chairman Gatchel.
Here.
Chairman Woltius.
Here.
Chairman Journey.
Present.
I guess you're not all Chairman, but, okay, sorry, Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Corr.
Here.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Right.
Blair, do you want to go ahead and go through the memorandum first?
Sure.
Is that all right with you, Chairman?
Yes, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. So, since we don't know how long this thing is gonna last, we thought it prudent to kind of get in writing how we're gonna handle these meetings and have it actually adopted by motion by the Commission, if it is your, your will. We, because right now, we, we believe we've adopted Robert's Rules of Order, which has some, some provisions for electronic meetings, but it's, it's not really fitting our situ-, our current situation very well. So this memo, which all of you should have, and which we will be making available to the public, and I will be reading it into the record right now, and then after I am done reading it, if you so choose, you can adopt it by motion, and it'll be the, the rules for the current, current situation with the pandemic. So memorandum to Planning Commission city staff and community members from Blair Larson, Community Economic Development Director, April 6, 2020. Subject: Proposed Emergency Planning Commission Electronic Meeting Process. Due to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, regular public meetings have been canceled statewide, and steps are being implemented to hold public meetings electronically. The following is the process I am proposing for the Planning Commission. While Robert's Rules of Order, which the Planning Commission has adopted, has some provisions for electronic meetings, they are insufficient for the current emergency. I request that the Planning Commission adopt these emergency procedures by motion at tonight's meeting. Number one, no more than three Planning Commissioners may attend the meeting in person, and the others will join the meeting electronically, either by video teleconference software or by telephone. Everyone is encouraged to join electronically if possible. Two, no more than two city staff members may attend the meeting in person. All other staff members will join electronically. Three, no more than four additional people, such as members of the public or press, will be permitted to attend in person. Four, all in-person attendees will observe current State of Oregon social distancing guidelines. Five, a live broadcast of the meeting will be available and posted on the city's website and social media outlets. This will allow everyone to view and hear the meeting. Six, anyone wishing to make comments during the appropriate time on the meeting agenda may call the City Hall telephone line. Those present physically at the meeting will ensure that all comments are heard and understood by all of the Planning Commissioners. Staff will ensure that all comments will be included in the meeting minutes. Seven, if the Planning Commission determines that any item on the agenda warrants additional public comment, they may, by motion, continue the meeting or public hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting time, either the first or third Monday of the month, 6:30 p.m., to allow for additional comments to be submitted to staff by mail, telephone message, or email. Any comments submitted will be read into the record when the Planning Commission next meets.
So. Do we want, does anybody have any questions about this? Or do you want to go ahead and make a motion to adopt these procedures and move what's going on around us?
So I have one question.
Yes.
So in items. Number two and three. Is that something that's done statewide with other? With other Planning Commission meetings and such? I mean, is that pretty consistent? Across the board?
We are trailblazers, as far, as far as I know, in this area. I have not talked to any who are attempting to continue to meet with their Planning Commissions. I've had a couple of, of colleagues in other cities contact me asking what we're doing, and they have all stated that they have postponed their meetings and are still figuring it out. So we, we don't really know what others are doing. The rules that I developed here were based on what our capabilities are and based on the intent to keep our meeting, in-person meeting, under the 10-person limit. And so if, if the maximum number of people attend in person under these rules, there would be nine people in the room. Wait, yes.
That sounds good.
Okay, so. Everyone's kind of asked their questions. Does anybody have any other questions for Blair in regards to this?
It looks like we have more seats set up for the public.
Just in case.
Than what is allowed here, but. But I think as reference to 10 maximum. There's probably one figures in here.
So this is Lance. I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt these emergency rules.
I second it.
I second it.
All right, we have a first and a second.
So Commissioner Gatchel moved, and Commissioner Stevens seconded, is that correct?
Stevens and Journey at the same time.
Okay. Okay, so call all of the.
All in favor of accepting the coronavirus electronic meeting procedure guidelines?
Aye.
Aye. About the duration? For this, do you want permanent?
I think, I think, whole thing, Henry's asked the question if we need to, is this gonna be a permanent thing? And I think this is kind of drawn up from Blair in regards to, not just this coronavirus pandemic, but in situations to come, if something else comes up like this, that this would also be implemented for those as well?
I, I was intending this to be for the current stated emergency. But they make sense to me for other pandemics, maybe not other emergencies. But that's really up to the Commission. I would suggest that in your motion, you, you maybe amend your motion to indicate how long you would like this to be in effect.
As far as maybe coming back and revisiting it?
Right.
Okay.
Until further notice.
So do we want to put in, does anybody want to put any kind of a timeline on this? And then if that timeline comes and goes, then we revisit it? Maybe making any kind of changes that we have found to be needed?
Yeah, how about until the State of Oregon changes their rules on social distancing as everything's back to normal?
Until they lift the restrictions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can live with that.
Okay, so Lance, do you want to do your motion again, stating our, what you just said about until Oregon has lifted their restrictions?
Sure, I will make a motion that we approve the emergency operating procedures that Blair has submitted for us, and that they will last until the State of Oregon removes restrictions that are in place for the COVID-19 pandemic.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion carried. Thanks for doing that, Blair.
Corr.
All right, so. Looking at the minutes from the last meeting, be approved. Does anybody have anything they want to change in minutes? From March 2nd?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as prepared.
I second that motion. We have a first and a second on approving the minutes from March 2nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? And so, minutes approved? I like my gavel. All right, so. Obviously, there's nobody here today. So we'll move on to our flood plane. Our public hearing for file LA 20-101, sorry. Kind of clarifying and updating our information in regards to flood planes, flooding, and all things to do flood related. Angela, is there anything you'd like to add to this? Obviously, you don't want to read this thing word for word.
No, but if you read the, open the hearing, read the criteria, then I'll start the, my comments.
Okay. Open the hearing at 6:55. Public hearing for file LA 2001. You don't need to read that, or?
Just the applicable substantive criteria.
I don't see that online. Is the first paragraph there?
It should be right after public hearing, public hearing opened.
This legislative amendment?
No, but you can read that, just. It should say, the applicable substantive criteria listed in the staff report.
Oh, I see it, yes, sorry. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue precludes the appeal of the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Does anyone have any personal bias in regards to this?
No.
No.
Conflicts of interest?
No.
No. No.
Ex parte information?
No.
No.
Okay. Angela.
All right, Chairman Parker. So this is a public hearing for file LA 20-01. The legislative amendment LA 20-01 consists of, consists of text amendments to Chapter 15.12 Flood Hazard Area Regulations of the Sweet Home Municipal Code. The proposed text amendments were identified by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLC. Reviewed and the text amendments are required for compliance with Minimal National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP, the N-State Standards. The proposal includes amendments following sections of the Sweet Home Municipal Code, 15.12, 15.12010 Statutory Authority, 15.12020 Statement of Purpose, 15.12025 Methods of Reducing Flood Losses, 15.12030 Definitions, 15.12060 Abrogation and Greater Restrictions, 15.12.100 Designation of Building Official as Local Administrator, 15.12.110 Application for a Building Permit, 15.12.120 Duties and Responsibilities of Building Inspector, 15.12.130 General Standards, 15.12.140 Lands To Which Chapter Applies, 15.12.170 Appeal Board, 15.12.150 Floodways, and 15.12.190 Penalties for Non-Compliance. I also need to read into record. The implement, the implementation of the proposed code amendments are consistent with the statewide planning goal and the end acknowledged sweet home comprehensive planning policies. These are also, Justin, our contract planner, wanted me to let you all know that he has been in communication with Patrick Wingard, who is our DLCD representative, in working on these, the criteria for this flood ordinance. So any questions? As you can see, you were given the edited version that has the strike throughs and the additions. Unless you really want me to, I'm not gonna read that word for word, but if you have any questions or anything at this time, just let me know.
All right, does anybody have any questions in regards to the edits?
No, but I think, this is Lance, I'll say thank you for sending out the edited version. That helped a lot to see where, where all the changes were.
Yeah, I liked that as well.
Yeah, I apologize, that was supposed to be originally in your packet, and it just didn't get attached to it, so.
So I, I found one on page six, under recreational vehicle, that might need a little more clarification. It states on number two that 400 square feet or less when measured at the largest horizontal projection. Technically, a fifth wheel can be 430 square feet, allowable by the RV Industry Association. So we might look at changing that 400 square feet to 430. And on the, on line item number three, it says, designed to be self-propelled or permanently towable by a light duty truck. Clarification on what they mean by light duty? Whether it's something that, basically, you could drive without a CDL license? I know that the, between light duty and medium duty trucks, there's a, there's no GVW or gross volume weight associated with that. So maybe if we could look into figuring out exactly whether it's just. I don't know if it even say a personally owned truck, because a lot of people, their trucks is company trucks, but. Clarification, maybe saying something, you know, a truck operated without the, without the need of a CDL. That way, it covers duallys and other trucks as well.
I'll find out.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Perhaps i- if you'd like to specify a size in, like, the tonnage of the truck? So typically, if I'm correct, and I don't know trucks that well, so I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but like an F-150 is typically, is that a one-ton or a three-quarter ton? Or is it a half-ton?
Half, yeah.
Half-ton? So you could, you could specify half-ton or lighter? Or if you want to go up to three-quarter ton? You know, using that kind of terminology might help clarify enough?
Right. Yeah, I've got a neighbor with a trailer, and there's no way you're pulling it with a half-ton pickup truck.
A lot, a lot of people have got Ford 250s or even 350s.
Yeah. Well, his RV is bigger than my house. Anybody else have any ways we might be able to clarify that a little better? Or if we just stick with three-quarter ton?
Or you could just put down by a typical pickup? They don't go over 350, well, I do.
Yeah, I go.
They make huge ones.
Would you guys like me to find a couple different ways and maybe bring that back to you and see what you think about it? Or do you want to just come up with it now, with these edits?
I'd be a little leery of just jumping in and assigning something to it right now. Just because I know that, you know, Ford may classify one truck as one-way, same thing in a Chevy might be different.
Okay.
So if we could find some kind of apples-to-apples comparison?
Okay.
Whether it's like Blair suggested, a three-quarter ton or half-ton and not maybe going into the one-ton?
I can work with Justin, and we can come, come up with something and come back with that, if that works.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to look at?
Well, there's a lot of RV pulled by one-ton pickups.
Yeah, I agree.
Lots of them. And you don't have to have a CDL to do it either.
Correct. That's where the CDL might, might make, or, you know, a truck that you can operate without one. That way, steering clear of air brakes and. I mean, if it's towable by something that's smaller, that's fine, you know?
A light duty would be like mine, which is less than a half-ton.
Yeah.
I'll do a little bit of research and talk to Justin, and then I can get back with you guys on some definition, clarification on that.
We would not go very far on if we just use the word pickup, because that would include a half, three-quarters, even a one-ton. And it would be a rare circumstance where you'd find one of these. Humongous mega pickups.
All the big cabovers and the top cats.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
You could just, you could just end it at towable and not specify by what. Because sometimes it's a bourbon or something that's towable.
They do have circumstances where, you know, they've got Freightliner pickups.
Yeah.
I mean, you find some really big ones that are hauling fifth-wheelers. And. They're big, they're big trucks.
I do get, yeah, go ahead, Lance, sorry.
Is this a, I'm just wondering about this language being something that's being recommended by the state to be compliant with the new regulations? And, and how much we're actually able to change it?
That's a good question. So Angela, is this, does this pull right off of the state website? Or is this something that, that we've come up with?
So I, and Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, you might, you've had conversations with Justin more than I have about this, but I know Justin has put this together using state criteria, working with Patrick and Selinda Adair from the flood plane. And Blair, do you have any more comments about kind of how all the verbiage came together for this?
Most of this is based on a model ordinance, but it has been, there is, you can tweak it. The, essentially, with things like this, you have a certain level that you're trying to satisfy to remain compliant with federal rules. And you can often go more detailed or, or more restrictive if you wish. So when it comes to this particular provision, I don't have any information right now on what that would entail. My thought is, is that if you have a broader description of what an RV is, that would probably be fine and would not get us in trouble with the federal government. But I think here, what we're really looking for is clarification on exactly, so that there isn't any confusion with folks on determining whether it applies to them. And so if you think there need to be more details in the law to, to clear up that confusion, then I think that that's perfectly legitimate.
Okay, I just, yeah, for me personally, especially living in the town that we live in, there aren't a lot of people with RVs that also own a light duty truck. Most of them are medium-to heavy duty trucks. I mean, because of logging industry and everybody's towing something around here. So maybe if we could just into that just a little bit and find a way to clarify it, just, just.
I like Lance's suggestion, just end the sentence after towable. That way, you can use a Suburban, whatever.
That, that makes a lot of sense, too. And it says permanently towable, so it wouldn't apply to a park model that would have the tongue cut off after delivery and stored underneath.
Well, it's up to you guys, you guys can, like I said, open and handle her.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Yes.
Okay, so towable period.
Period right after towable.
I'm okay with that, too.
The great thing is that this still has to go before the, the council. And so if you want to make recommendations to the council that it be passed with, with your modifications, we can also find out more details on, on exactly what changes we can make, and those can be reviewed by the, by the city council and adjusted again.
I think that's a good idea.
That sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right. So if no one else has anything they'd like to look at, ask questions on, or, or make notes to in regards to Legislative Amendment 2001?
Probably have a few other questions, but who in the city is gonna be the designated administrator of this?
I believe it would be city manager, according to.
Well, it says city manager or his designee.
Usually, do you mind? Usually that means, or designee would also be Blair, the, the KED director or anyone that's designated to assign documents. So it's usually either city manager or upper management. And in this case, we put it as designee so that the KED director can also make calls on this, so. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong there, but.
Yeah, the, the way that works is that there, there are assigned staff that work on various permits, and that when somebody is seeking a permit, these rules would come into effect, and they would be part of, of the review for that building permit or that planning permit. And the appropriate staff member would be considered the design, the city manager's designee in that circumstance.
This is probably a funny sounding question, but on page 10, what do we mean by free board down the bottom paragraph? Page 10.
Page 10, which provision?
Which number, Henry?
Which number, Henry?
Page 10, go up, three paragraphs, number five. I wasn't, I wasn't acquainted with that.
Five.
The base flood elevation, is that what you're?
No, I think he's got the other one. Try, try to pack it on your.
So the free board? So the freeboard, if I, if I understand it correctly, freeboard is typically, like on a boat, when you have freeboard, that's, that's the, the amount of space between the, the water line and, you know, the, the deck basically. It's the, the elevation that you have that water can get up to without causing any, any damage to a structure. That's my understanding, but I'm not a flood expert.
Just words that is not used commonly.
Yeah, so when, when a building permit is applied for, and if it's, if there are any flood regulations that apply to that building, there will be height, there will be requirements for the first habitable level of that building being above a certain elevation. So that base flood elevation applies to that and the freeboard would be the, the essentially that space that we're talking about to the first level, the first habitable level.
Can I answer your question? Yeah.
I think he'd work for it. He sounds like he was an authority.
Anybody want to add anything else?
Page 21 has some interesting comments. I don't know if we want to discuss them, but on page 21, I have a number five.
Crossed out version and the non-crossed out?
Non.
Okay, because that's there.
Another one.
You open that one up.
Dating with recreational vehicles. And it said, of course, I realize this is pertinent only to the flood zone. This is a flood issue. But they can be on site for fewer than 180 consecutive days.
Page 21, hold on, I'm getting there, so.
Just kind of wonder where that came from and what the intent was.
What number are you looking at, Henry?
I didn't hear what you said.
Page five A, page 21.
Page 21.
Five A.
Yeah, not on the amended one, but in the packet.
Based on sites are two.
Which page are you on?
The non-striked version, the actual ordinance, he's reading page 21, number five eight.
It's also on the edited one, it wasn't changed.
Still on page 21?
Correct.
Did I miss it?
Yes, a little higher up.
Oh, it is.
How did we arrive at 180 days and what does that have to do with the definition of an RV?
I think it's just a differentiated between other structures that might be similar, such as tiny homes or manufactured homes and that kind of thing. This is not necessarily saying that those structures are allowed. It's just differentiating recreational vehicles from those.
But it just kind of seems irregular to apply a time to it. And why we have chosen 180 days. And there really ought to be probably in a storage center.
I believe that's because of the complying with federal regulations. But again, that's, that's another question that we can verify for you. Unfortunately, I don't have the answers to that at this time.
Okay, can you take a look at it and get back to us?
Yep.
I wonder if that's another thing that maybe we can just kind of flag to have the city council look at. So we don't have to wait another month.
That's perfectly up to, to you, the, the commission.
I'm fine with passing that on to the city council. I'm sure it has something to do more with people camping in it versus living in it, but it's not actually specified.
180 days is a long time to be camping. We've got a lot of people that are living in their RVs.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to, since this has been reviewed and updated for the purpose of making sure that we're compliant. And so it's accept, it's acceptable as it is, is my understanding, that, that we pass it on with suggestions and get it resolved rather than pick it apart too much. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think that this is a minor enough, but important enough point that Blair, you could find out a little bit about the timeframe and then just pass it on to the council with that information.
Okay. When we get to the point where someone makes a motion, you can indicate, include that in the motion.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add before making a motion? If not?
Yeah, we do need to have the meeting open to comment on the application as well, right? This, we have to open the public hearing on this.
It was open. He did open it.
He did, okay. So we do have to make sure that people who are, there are some who are listening to the live or watching the live stream of this meeting. And we do need to inform them of a phone number that they can call and make comments if they wish.
It is my understanding that the phone number that was posted is not working currently.
Yes, and so if there.
Call my line then, like in the next so many days?
I was hoping that we could have pulled in, if, if we can give a general city hall phone number that they can call in the next, you know, few minutes, that we can give on this, give them the number right here on the live stream.
I can do that.
Brandon, 541-818-7030.
Can you repeat that again, Blair?
541-818-7030, seven zero three zero. So if there is anyone watching this live stream that would like to make a comment on the proposed ordinance, they need to call, we need to give enough time for them to call that number, 541-818-7030. Call that number right now to make any comments. If you do not get through, you can contact us at a later time and we will make sure your comments are included in the record and, and brought to the attention of, of the city council or the planning commission as the case may be.
Do we want to put a timer to this or?
Do we want to put like a time to call in by?
Again, this is one of those things where it's the first time we're doing it. The original intent was to have this number available and have a, a speakerphone there in the room that people could call in on to make their, their comment. And that if there was anybody watching, we can, we could do that. Brandon has said that there's, there has not been any text comments on the live stream. People have the capability of doing that. But for those who are less technologically savvy, that might be more difficult. And so we've been advertising the phone number. I believe we should give enough time so that anybody who is watching this can get to their phone and make that call. There is a slight delay in the streaming of the meeting. I believe it's like 10 seconds. And so as long as we give them a five minute window, I'm sure that's probably enough for this evening. It would be enough for anybody who is going to call this evening to make that call. And then it's up to the commission to determine whether you think there sufficient time has been given for comments or if you want to continue this public hearing to a later date so that we can gather additional comments if there be any.
I would make the suggestion that we give them until 7:30, which would be about eight minutes.
Okay. That works for everyone. It's currently 7:24. Leave the line open for phone calls till 7:30. At that point, the comments will just be attached going forward to the city council.
I just got a message from Brandon and he said that Commissioner Lance Gatchel did call the number to test it and, and got through. Apparently he didn't have a comment.
No, I had a comment, I was just checking.
I know, I'm just, I'm just giving you a hard time. I'm glad you checked.
Well, it's good to know it's working.
Yay, Brandon.
These are, this is one of the wrinkles that we would like to iron out in this process.
No, that's fine. Well, we will play a waiting game until 7:30.
Anything else in this?
Yeah, feel free to bring up other questions if any come to mind.
Well, I have, I have one question. I wonder if it would be appropriate to go through the, the meeting procedure, like as far as having the chair say that, is there anybody who has testimony in favor or testimony in opposition, neutral testimony, all that kind of stuff? Just to make sure that all the stuff that's in our, in our code for this planning commission hearing is, is included in the record.
Thanks. Yeah, the doors are currently locked for the whole, I mean, not. As far as anybody being in the room, there is none. But we will go through that as suggested by Lance, that is a good idea. This time we'll offer anybody the chance to come forward with testimony in favor. Testimony in opposition. Neutral testimony? No. All right. Thank you, Lance.
No problem.
It's waiting here. Okay, well, while we're waiting, I just want to go through and make sure. So the changes that you want to recommend for council to review were on page six. Maybe changing the 400 square feet to 430 square feet or less per the RV guidelines. And then also number three, taking out buy a light duty truck and just ending it at towable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so those two, and then on page 21.
Okay, timeout.
Okay.
What you, what you're talking about on the recreational vehicle is on page seven on my documents.
It's probably, it depends on which, if you have the crossed out version or the non-crossed out version, what you're looking at, so.
Yeah, edited or the non-edited.
So we're looking at.
I'm looking at the, at the non-edited.
Okay, so I'm just going to say the section recreational vehicle. I want to put a page number on my notes here and bring that one up. It's at page seven. Okay, so it's either page six of the edited or.
It's under section 15, 12, 30 definitions.
Yeah.
Great for you. Yeah. It would really matter more timing.
No, okay, so, yeah, so 400 square feet. And then eliminating by a light duty truck. And then section, if you guess. Great, sorry. And then number five A, beyond that for fewer than 180 days. We just want a clarification of what that, if it's a state recommendation or not. I know the city doesn't allow that many days, so I'll find out for sure and put the recommendation in there and we can run it through city council. So those were the only sections so far correct, so I'll make sure my notes are correct.
Yes, as far as I know. We are sitting at 7:29 at the moment. We'll wait one more minute. Phone call.
Somebody's doing a good job with the camera.
That's a computer.
We were going to give all, give you all the credit.
I know, I didn't know who controlled it either, so.
No, it's software driven. The funny thing is, is when I was in college, I had a job as a camera operator for the PBS station. And, and so that was my job, was pointing the camera at the right things and zooming in and out. And now technology has taken over that job.
All right, it is now 7:30. We will close the public hearing in regards to file LA 201, 01. All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, this is Lance. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we recommend that this be referred to city council with the amendments, suggestions to look at things that Angela just said. The definition of a recreational vehicle and length of stay for recreational vehicle. Recommending that it, that the, the planning commission recommends it to city council for approval. After reviewing those questions.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor of passing on our findings to city council and.
Chairman Parker, can I interrupt for just one second? Because we have half of you virtually and half of you here, we're going to do a roll call. So that way I know exactly who voted when. Not that you're not opposing, but it was recommended. Since we're, you're not as present, I can't see you, so.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote for this. So Chairman Parker.
I'm in favor.
Favor, okay. Commissioner Gatchel.
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Journey.
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Stevens.
In favor.
And Commissioner Walthius.
In favor.
And Commissioner Horn.
In favor.
So that is six ayes and no nays.
All right. Are there any other staff updates or?
Blair, do you have any other staff updates you want to?
Other projects that I want to know?
One thing that just comes to mind, uh, now, now that you had that, held that vote. Ray brought it up that we should have a roll call vote when we have these electronic meetings, and I completely agree. Uh, and it's something that I should have included in those procedures that you passed at the beginning of the meeting. And so I would suggest that by motion that you add that to those procedures, a further rule that any vote taken be done on a roll call basis.
I still move.
I second it.
So Journey and Stevens.
Yeah. Would you like to do a roll call vote now on that?
Um, yeah, I'll do a roll call. Um, hold on, sorry, now I'm ready. Okay, so let's do a roll call vote again for this to move to add that to the emergency meeting procedures. So Chairman Parker?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Gatchel?
Aye.
Commissioner Journey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
And Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Blair, that's a good thing to add in there.
Uh, other than that, I don't really have any other staff, things to report from staff. We're kind of getting used to this new normal of ours. Um, work is proceeding on the upgrade, update of the development code. I just got an email from Walt Wendelowski today on that. And there's, there's not anything to bring to you at this time, but just work that's, that's being done. And I haven't had time to, to review in detail his email. But that's, that's moving forward. Other than that, I, it's just, we are in a very strange time, and I appreciate your willingness to, to serve in, in very strange circumstances and adapt yourself in, in different ways to get these kind of things done. I can't stress how much that's a relief to me as, as a staff person to know that the appointed and elected officials are, are behind us on this, because it's, it's awkward. Our, our work was not designed to be done in this way, and so we're, we're having to adapt and still follow the law, uh, which is not always easy. Um, and so I appreciate that, and I appreciate what Angela and the other, our other staff members have been able to do, given that. And I think that the public appreciates it and that they are wanting to see work continue as much as we can. And so I just wanted to express that to you. Um, one, one final thing, shoot, I think I forgot what it was. Dang it. Anyway, uh, yeah, things are, things are strange, but we're working through it anyway. Oh, this was what it was. Uh, like I mentioned previously, no other cities are really doing this right now. And, and so we are kind of trailblazers in this area, and we may mess up a little bit, but that's the risk that we take when we're, when we're trailblazers, because other cities are watching to see what, what others are doing first and before they make their, their adjustments and their rules. So I think this is great, and, and I also, I want to get as much desk work as we can get done, as much permit work as we can get done now while, while the economy is essentially shut down. Because the more work that we can push through now with these constraints that we have, it is the faster that things are gonna get done and get back up going after all of this is over with. So I really appreciate your flexibility, and let's keep moving forward.
Yeah, to add to that, if you don't mind, just so you all know, the planning department is still running. Having, now that, next week will be a city council meeting, so the zone change amendments, the third reading will happen. Um, if that is approved, and then I actually have six applications on hold for that. Um, our next planning commission, or, yeah, planning commission meeting, we will all have another zone change application. Um, so applications are still moving through the system. A lot of them right now are serial, so you guys aren't seeing them as much. Um, but yep, I'm keeping busy at home. Blair's keeping me busy at home, trying not to, trying not to go stir crazy. Yeah, and so as far as everything else goes, you know, we're kind of playing it by ear, and so I appreciate it. I didn't even know how it was gonna go, we've had a couple meetings online where we all just like goofy at each other, so. But yeah, if you have any questions as to, you know, what we have in the hopper, don't, you know, feel free to get air in, because we're still moving forward, so.
Oh, it's nice. I mean, I know that we have to crawl before we walk with this whole thing, and I think it went very smoothly tonight, other than a few logging issues and, you know, it'd be nice to see everybody's smiling face, but we've got, we've got their voices if nothing else. So I think we're just ironing out a few things as we go and keep moving forward.
And we will continue to try to get things operating more smoothly. Um, I, I also want to make sure, a, a big thank you goes out to Brandon Nish, our finance director slash IT director. He's, he's been amazing getting things like this set up, and I just wanted you all to know that it's, it's not just Angela and me. Most, a lot of the work has, has been him in getting this going, so thank you, Brandon.
Those of you who've got binders that are at home, if you want to drop your binders off, just let me know, and we can do the drop off, the curbside drop off, and then I can get them swapped out for the next time. You guys that are here, you can just leave them. So if that's working for you, if there's another way you want to do it, let me know. But that's kind of what we've come up with for right now, so if that works, right, then, you know, we'll just keep doing it that way, so.
All right.
Okay, that's all I have.
I want to comment on it, if that's okay?
Yes.
Um, I've been told, I heard you talking earlier about how we needed a, an email address, a city email address. And I've been told before that I have a city email address, and I just never used it. So I think we may have them.
They're probably the old ones, Lance, and so you'll probably need the newer one, because we changed, the, was it called the suffix part of our email, um, when we moved over here. So you'll probably need a new one anyway, just because we did change all, the way our emails are now, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, it's nice to see three of you on the computer screen anyway. Hope I get to y'all soon.
Yeah, I hope so too. I think we'll have a lot of bugs worked out by the time this rolls around next, so. On that, I'm gonna thank everybody and close the meeting at 7:40.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
All right.